I'm gonna do a curtain call for the remainder of council. We do have three council members here and so we can go ahead and again, any time. Councilmember Way, let's give you a moment. Great. On this camera's turn. Welcome. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct our roll call?
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember. Councilmember Way. Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Mayor Paul.
Okay, I heard you.
And I'm here. All right. After roll call, our first matter unenumerated is. Is Terry, I just muted you, just so you know. The first item is orders of the day. It's unenumerated and I'm going to ask that we move item number fourteen up for reasons that will become evident. But item number fourteen is the consideration of appointment of the selected candidate as city manager, approval of the employment agreement and amending the appointed employees' compensation program. So I'll go ahead and make that motion. Would anyone like to second that motion from council? And Councilmember Way, I see your hand up. Would you like to second that?
Yes, please. I'll second it.
Okay, excellent. Madam City Clerk, could you conduct a roll call vote on that motion for? Or are there any other items on orders of the day from council? We'll go by a show of Zoom hands here. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call on the orders of the day.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number fourteen is as described. And so I would like to let the members of the public know that City Council designated a subcommittee. And so our subcommittee report is available with the agenda packet. I do have legal language that I have to provide to the public. And so I will provide that now. In accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five three C three, I am providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to set the salary and terms and conditions of employment for the city manager position effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two. The proposed base compensation is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two. The employment agreement also provides for an automobile allowance of five hundred dollars per month and for reimbursement of relocation expenses not to exceed five thousand dollars. The total annual compensation is four hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents, inclusive of fringe benefits, payroll taxes and retirement contributions. Additional details regarding this item are set forth in the agenda and resolution associated with the item. And I do want to make a brief statement separately from our legal requirements. The City Council of Cupertino cast a nationwide net in order to bring forth an excellent city manager with the experienced temperament and commitment to serve the entire community well. Council worked long hours and had impassioned discussions reflective of how much each of us cares deeply about our collective future. In the upcoming weeks and months, as we continue to do the hard work of having an open and honest conversation with results born of intelligence and integrity, I know that we will have a good partner in Jim Troop. And yes, it is Jim Troop who we have selected to bring forth to the public today. I want to say also that Jim is the current city manager of Lompoc and that their meetings happen to coincide exactly with ours. Jim, respecting your time and the quite possible need to have a conversation with your own city council relatively immediately, would you like to say a few words at this point? Jim is joining us on Zoom.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and I do appreciate this opportunity. I do want to say it is a true honor to have been selected to be Cupertino's next city manager. It really has been. Anyone that knows me knows that I'm going to be committing a hundred percent to the continued success for Cupertino, as we discussed in the different interviews we had. I do look at this as like a pinnacle step in my career. Cupertino is one of those cities at the top that people talk about and know about. I'll tell you, my family, when I said I was interviewing them, wow, Cupertino, that's pretty impressive. So it's a known city. It's very well run. It's well financed. You know, some of the things I plan to do is to be very engaged, as we talked about, with the public, to get out there and to meet not just the business owners, but the community itself. You know, I want to get their ideas on what makes the city great today, but what's going to make it even better tomorrow? So that's my goal, to get out there and get an understanding. You know, I'm excited, and this is a little silly to say, but I was excited when the mayor and councilmember Moore called, said, you know, we'd like to offer you the job. I had that little happy dance going, and I don't dance well, so it was good you didn't see that on the phone. But it was really an exciting time. And even that's probably not, it's more of an energized time, I guess, even more than just exciting to be able to come forth and help the council, help the staff, help the community, you know, continue to move Cupertino forward. I'm not going to be there probably until, you know, January third. And in between that time, I will be reaching out to our current, you know, De Greg interim city manager, to the council, to the city staff, trying to get my feet under me. So when I'm there, I'm not just wandering the halls aimlessly. I want to be able to get to the ground running, as they say. And again, I'm going to do everything I can to be, you know, be part of that community, to be in there and learn what people want. What are they expecting? What can we do to continue the services we provide now? How do we improve upon those? And so there's a lot of good, good work ahead of us, some good goals ahead of us to work on. And I think I'm going to be in there helping you do that. So I just want to say thank you again to the mayor and to the council for your selection.
Thank you, Jim. At this time, I'm going to remind everyone that Jim does have another meeting to attend and may be dropping off from ours soon. But to our fellow members of the public, if council does pass this item, you'll have an opportunity to welcome Jim to our community no later than January eighteenth, as his first day would be January third, and we are not having a regular meeting the following day, January fourth, essentially because preparation and publication for that meeting would take place directly between the Christmas holiday and New Year's Day, which fall on weekends this year. I would imagine that is quite likely, that we'll have a special meeting sometime between January third and January eighteenth as well. And so that is a possibility at this point. And with all that in mind, we're happy to take public comment before setting forth a motion. I do notice a number of members of the public have their hands raised. And so I will ask you, if you are not here for item number fourteen and instead you wanted to speak on oral communications, please do lower your hands. And item number fourteen, I remind you, is consideration for approval of the new city manager contract. At this point, I see three remaining hands raised. They are from Tony G., Paul Soto and Peggy Griffin. And once again, I remind you that this is item number fourteen, consideration of a contract for a new city manager for Cupertino. Tony, welcome. And Tony, I take it by you're not unmuting. You are here for a different item, and so I will go on to Paul Soto. Paul, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Welcome, Mr. Troop, to the area. I would, at the risk of sounding pandemic, I would suggest if you can familiarize yourself with the history of Santa Clara County. It is a long history. It is a storied history. It is an extremely violent and racist history. And those kinds of conversations need to be understood within the context of the way that you're going to be legislating a business, because you're going to run into issues and snags that actually have their root in generations back. And so if you have, I would suggest Dr. Stephen Peet's, Dr. Stephen Peet's book, The Devil in Silicon Valley. It is a really good, comprehensive, academic overview of the socioeconomic, political and existential pressures and issues that created Santa Clara County. And so welcome, welcome to the, welcome to the area. Thank you.
Paul, our next speaker is Peggy Griffin, followed by Mooney Madapadla, who will be our last speaker. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council, staff, and welcome to Cupertino, Mr. Troop. I am, we all are glad to have a manager. We've all been looking forward to this. We've enjoyed having Greg Larson. He's done a fantastic job. But now you're the keeper. And I am thrilled to hear that you are prioritizing engagement with the community. You will find out that we are all diverse. We have different opinions and we all feel very strongly about things. But we all have the same goal of wanting to make Cupertino better. So welcome and enjoy your holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Mooney. Welcome, Mooney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the new manager, Mr. James Troop. Welcome. So we really love having you here. So you'll find one of the very, very engaged community that you'll work with, right? So we, as community members, you know, get heavily involved in city civic matters, right? So we are looking forward to, you know, working with you very closely for the success of, you know, Cupertino. And welcome again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mooney. I'll bring it back to council. I'm going to go ahead and move first that the city council appoint as James Troop, the Cupertino city manager effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Second, that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement for city manager between the city of Cupertino and James Troop. And third, that the city council adopt resolution number two one dash one zero seven to amend the appointed employees' compensation program. May I have a second for my motion before entertaining discussion on this item? And I see Councilmember Moore's hand is raised. Councilmember Moore, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, absolutely. Second it.
Excellent. So let me go ahead and open up our availability for any comments at this time from council. Again, with the understanding that, you know, Jim has his own meeting in Lompoc to attend to. But Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, to want to let the community know that, you know, as the mayor said, we casted the net very wide and far and had some good candidates to look at and consider. And we feel that Jim is going to be the best choice for this community, for our residents. And so with that, Jim, welcome. We're so glad that you accepted. So glad that I'll be seeing you in the halls and on the sidewalks of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Way, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just want to say very short welcome to Jim. You'll get to know our community. We're very vibrant. We are also very collaborative. I'd like the public to know that. This council worked collaboratively. We have unanimous vote for when we hired our city attorney, Chris Jensen, when we hired our incoming city manager, Brett Lawson, and when we are hiring our incoming city manager, Jim. So we are a good council to work with and we are a good city to work with. So welcome, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Chow. And you'll need to unmute yourself, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Chow.
Welcome. I think we are all very impressed with your background. I think you will be able to steer Cupertino. It's not an easy job, but it will be an interesting job. And we have considered a very diverse candidate pool. It was a very tough decision. We had some other excellent candidates, but then eventually we think you, and we are looking forward to working with you, starting from January third. Thank you for choosing Cupertino.
Oh, thank you for choosing me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, and I will keep it very brief because I did watch some of your meetings and I know you've got a lot of work still there. So there are lots of articles about Jim Troop that people can read about. And I'm particularly excited about the finance background and then the different public services that were offered in, got a cat, in Lompoc and how you're going to be able to apply that skill set and knowledge here. And I also want to thank Mayor Paul for doing an outstanding job on the subcommittee and hiring process. And he needs to be commended for that as well. And so welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Well, Jim, you know, I'm not going to delay this anymore. Yeah, I think that you're choosing the right community. I think our council chose the right person. And, you know, you're extremely meticulous. I can see that. You were already in Cupertino a couple of weekends ago. And I had the pleasure of meeting both you and your wife. I can unqualifiedly say I think this community will welcome you and your family with open arms. And so without any further ado, let us take the roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, may I note that there is also a second resolution, resolution number twenty-one dash one one zero that is accompanying the city manager contract. Was not noted in the agenda, but it was included as a written communication along with the materials for this evening.
Okay, I will consider that incorporated. Will my secondor also incorporate resolution number twenty-one dash one one zero into the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now would you conduct the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye, and a warm welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We'll see you soon, Jim.
Okay, I'm running off to my, to the other one. Thank you again, everybody.
Absolutely. Okay, so we are now back to the agenda. Following ceremonial matters and presentations, just to give people a quick preview, will be postponements and then oral communications. The first enumerated item on our agenda is a proclamation to women impacting public policy and the Small Business Saturday Coalition, supporting Small Business Saturday in Cupertino. I'm very pleased to be able to provide this proclamation to the public, to Cupertino, primarily because it's such an important thing that we look forward to economic revival at this point. Of course, the post Thanksgiving day and that weekend is extremely important for business in general, but particularly for a community that holds our quality of life and support for our local efforts to build up businesses and support the community. So important, as well as the fact that we really want to be able to encourage all sorts of different groups to get vested within the community. I'm just so very happy that women impacting public policy approached us to provide that proclamation. And so it's very timely. I believe that Anjali Kouser from our local Chamber of Commerce is here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the organization. And Anjali, welcome. Did you want to say a few words prior to us showing the proclamation through the city clerk's screen?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Thank you, City Council. And on behalf of the small businesses in the community and the Women's Association, I am excited as the Chamber of Commerce, Cupertino, to accept this proclamation from you and also encourage all our citizens to remember to shop local. Small businesses are what make the fiber of Cupertino and large businesses support it all. So please remember to shop local, especially during the holiday months that are coming up. And also, you know, the city supports a I love Cupertino community card, which I'm hope encouraging everyone to please go out and purchase and support our local businesses. Thank you, Mayor Paul.
Thank you, Anjali. And time really flies, doesn't it? It seems like yesterday I was on the board helping to hire you for that position, but that's probably a good ten years ago now. So I also want to take this opportunity to welcome, and I know we've already welcomed Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager previously, but thank you for reminding me, Tina, of that by putting on your camera. Did you want to say a few words as you embark on the economic development management role in Cupertino?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would first like to say that it's wonderful that you're recognizing Small Business Saturday. It serves as a great reminder for everyone to not only support our local and small businesses on this day, but every day. Cam Wu and Anjali Kouser, on behalf of all the small businesses in Cupertino and those that support them, thank you. Even though I've been with Cupertino for just a little over a month, it's clear that our, you know, unique and diverse businesses are key to the city's economic vitality and will continue to be a driving force in furthering the city's economic goals and vision. I'm very excited about this new adventure. I'm extremely impressed by the professionalism and the care that council and staff show. And I'm looking forward to serving as the Economic Development Manager for Cupertino, a city that is home to one of the world's largest companies, but also many small businesses that add vibrancy, bring innovation and job creation, in addition to fostering local pride. Thank you again for the warm welcome.
Wonderful, Tina. Thank you very much. And everyone, as the holiday comes up for Thanksgiving, don't forget Small Business Saturday. Don't forget businesses in Cupertino. Don't forget women-owned businesses in Cupertino. And we very much appreciate everyone's support as we pull through what's been a difficult time, but also a very optimistic time for our city. All right, so let's go on to the next item on our agenda. That is postponements. Mr. Interim City Manager, do we have any postponements that are suggested from staff this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much and thank you for that wonderful welcome to our new Economic Development Manager. Let's see, staff is recommending that item seventeen, which was the first reading of an ordinance that prohibits parking along the west side of Vista Drive and the south side of Merritt Drive be postponed to a date uncertain. While this item was first approved, along with the list of other similar bicycle and pedestrian improvements from the council, by the council back in two thousand and nineteen, since there's been council changeovers since then. And in fact, there's been bike head commission changeover since then. And the chair of the commission was not familiar with this project, although the commission had a designated representative that served on the Safe Routes to School Committee that worked with staff in bringing this forward. But we've decided that henceforth, the remaining projects on that list that was approved in two thousand and nineteen will go back before the bike head commission, before they come to council, just to make sure that the new participants are aware of those projects. I will point out that not all of those projects have to come back to council. The only reason this one was coming back to council was because only the council has the authority to remove parking on the streets. So this was the final implementation act, after having worked with schools, done community and neighborhood meetings and others. But we've just set a new practice. We'll take the remaining projects to the bike head commission before they come to council. So we'd like postponement to a date uncertain.
Thank you, Greg. I'll go ahead and move that request. And would anyone like to second that? I'll go by show of hands here. I think it's wise. Councilmember Moore?
Second.
Okay, very good. And you have our appreciation as well. We have a very packed schedule tonight. Okay, I do see members of the public with their hands raised. However, I do want to remind everyone that this is postponements and not oral communications. And so let me give you a moment, if you're a member of the public that does not want to speak on postponements, to lower your hand. Okay, so I have a C C Zhou and no longer with a hand raised. Let me bring it back to council. There's motion and a second on the table. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk.
Motion carries unanimously.
And our next item is oral communications. This is the portion of our agenda reserved for any members of the community that would like to speak to an item that is not on our agenda. And I would like to remind our members of the community that we have another item at the very end of our agenda now for continued oral communications. I will allocate half an hour for the oral communications here. I do see quite a few hands raised at this point. And so I'm going to go ahead and attempt to divvy the three minutes for everybody. We might be in excess of those ten hands raised at this point. So if we could try to keep brevity with our comments, we could help to ensure that everyone who wants to speak at this portion of the meeting can speak. But I'm going to go ahead and mark the time as seven ten now. At seven forty, I'm going to go ahead and cut off oral communications until the end of the meeting. And so let me read off those initial hands. Those are Jennifer Griffin, Mooney Madapadla, Tony G., Eding, Pilar Furlong, Brooke Ezot, Tessa Parish, Alex Minishu, C C Zhou, Paul Soto, Sean Hughes, Lisa Warren, Gilbert Wong, Pamela Hershey, Callie Wang, Kent Chang, Randy Shingai, Zi Yu He, Chris Retana, Leon Zhu, Flora H., Dave Xiaohua Yang. Okay, so, and Wei. So and I'll also remind everyone that if you want to get on the list to speak, you'll need to have your hand raised by the time the first person concludes their comments. And so given the volume of hands at this point, I will go ahead and ask the video control room to go ahead and reset the public communications to two minutes in the interest of giving as many people who want to speak at this point as possible the chance to speak. Jennifer Griffin, welcome, and you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Mayor Paul, I should say, or something used to say that. Yes, I hope you all can hear me. I just wanted to start out, welcome to the new city manager. I'm sure we're going to be a bundle of fun. But it's a great city and I'm sure you'll have a really fun time. Anyway, I will start out. I am going to start off on our wonderful housing bills. Okay, it may get boring, but I'm really concerned that what are we going to wind up in January with a whole new parcel of housing bills? I think last year, a lot of these, I think nine and ten were actually introduced in December of last, of two thousand and twenty. And now look what happened. They've all been signed into law, which God knows what is going to happen. I predict complete bedlam. And we don't know what is in store for us. It will be introduced in January. There have been ruminations that there are people that are planning some of these new bills. But as far as I'm concerned, what is the goal here? Complete takeover of every city's ability to conduct its own business by the state? I mean, where are we going with this? We have had no discussion, little or no discussion about the level of control that is being taken away by these housing bills. Are we trying to go into some sort of autocracy? I don't, I don't hear Sacramento asking us, the public, what we think about what's happening. And boy, do I have a lot to say. I think this state has some very, very severe governance problems. If I'm going to pick on the Democratic Party for just a minute, bear with me. The Democratic Party runs the state, okay, but they're having some problems.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our next speaker is Mooney Madapadla. Welcome, Mooney.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mooney Madipatla. I'm a Cupertino resident and planning commission member as well. I'm speaking here today in my personal capacity as an involved community member and a resident. It's been known for well over four years that a certain group of smear bloggers, acting on behalf of real estate interests, have been smear blogging about Cupertino residents and elected city officials in an attempt to silence the voice of the community. They cherry pick, you know, some sound bites from long discussion threads and post them on the smear blogging sites such as, you know, bittercupidino.wordpress.com. You can go and check, you know, all the smearing that they do there and the screenshots they post there. Their actions are despicable and they hide behind the anonymity of, you know, curtain of the internet, since their tactics are not working, as evidenced by election of, you know, overwhelming majority of our resident-focused city council members. They are now, you know, embarking on character assassination of those elected members through social media outlets. I learned that, you know, these despicable characters are seeking public apology from Vice Mayor Liang Chow for something she did not say. I believe, you know, Vice Mayor Liang Chow is one of the finest elected office bearers we have, and I fully support her stance. She should not be apologizing for something she did not say. I'll repeat it. She should not be apologizing for something she did not say. On the other hand, I asked the city council to reprimand these groups, the smear blogging groups, that they disclose their financial sources and they register as a lobbying group as per Cupertino lobbying ordinance. And they tendered a public apology to the Cupertino community at large and the elected officials, because what they are, is despicable. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mooney. And I'll go ahead and read off the names that were added by the time that the first speaker concluded. Those are Jean Lee, Sudhikasm Sethi J., Su Jun, Jenny Zhao, Vera. And I'll remind everyone, we have a hard stop at seven forty for oral communications, but we will pick it up again if we have time prior to midnight near the end of the meeting. Next, we have Tony G. Next, we have Tony G. Welcome, Tony.
Hey, thank you for letting me speak. I am a Cupertino district parent. And I'm, also, I'm here talking, representing a big number of volunteers in the last year's No on Prop 16 campaign. So about councilmember Liang Chow being smeared on the social media and being a cyberbully. So we are very, very concerned. So from the beginning, I have been in the same discussion forum with Liang Chow and all the other parents. And I know exactly what happened and how it went. So Liang Chow's comment on the Chinese Exclusion Act was taken out of context. And there was a post on the social media before Liang Chow, before getting any confirmation with Liang Chow on her opinion. And those people put words into Liang Chow's mouth. So that's very despicable. So just so you know, that those people who are doing the fake accusation against Liang Chow has been expelled out of our group by unanimous votes from the administrators. And Gilbert Wong, who is one of them.
Fifteen seconds.
Yeah. He never was our Chinese leader, and he will never represent us. So whatever he says to the media, totally hoax. So please do not, do not give in, Liang Chow.
That's fine, Tony. Thank you, Tony. Our next speaker is Yi Ding. Welcome, Yi.
Hello. So I have read the Vice Mayor's latest statements, and I see that the Vice Mayor and I see much more eye-to-eye on the Chinese Exclusion Act today than we did 10 days ago. It was never personal, but I would like to reiterate something that I've said for all those here today. There has never been a good reason for the Chinese Exclusion Act. Not 100 years ago, not 200 years ago, not even 100 years from now, when we are all dead. Never. 也是在这个小城市通过所有人的努力我们才选上几个自己人可以偶尔帮我们个忙偶尔替我们说句话 To paraphrase the great Russell Peters, be a woman, do the right thing.
Thank you, Yi. Next, we have Pilar Furlong. Welcome, Pilar.
Good evening. I'm Pilar Furlong, and I'm with Bill Wilson Center. We're a local nonprofit in Santa Clara County working to end youth and family homelessness. I'm here to let the community know that November is Runaway and Homeless Youth Prevention Month. This is a statewide campaign spearheaded each November to increase awareness about homelessness among youth and young adults in our community and to spotlight the resources available for youth in crisis. This is especially critical in Santa Clara County, because despite being a technology hub, our county now has the fourth highest population of homeless individuals in the nation and the highest rate of unaccompanied homeless youth. At San Jose State, 42% of students reported being housing insecure within the past year, and more than 11% of students reported being homeless, with many couch surfing, living out of their cars, or spending nights in motels, hotels, or shelters. The longer a person is homeless, the longer it takes and the costlier it is to help them transition to permanent housing. Lacking adequate employment and skills for independent living increases the likelihood that homeless youth will become chronically homeless adults. Bill Wilson Center has been serving homeless youth for over 45 years. The clients we serve typically range from children as young as 11, who have run away from home, to older youth between the ages of 18 to 24, some of whom have children. Our goal is to provide an integrated system of care that helps homeless youth attain stable housing, either through family reunification or through economic self-sufficiency.
Fifteen seconds.
This means we not only offer immediate shelter, but also supportive services to teach living skills. So to learn more about resources for homeless youth, you can visit billwilsoncenter.org. And if you know a young person who is homeless, please refer them to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar, and thank you for your work. Our next speaker is Brooke Ezot. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you for letting me speak. First of all, I wanted to thank the council and David Stillman for listening to the concerns of my neighborhood. And secondly, I wanted to address the scurrilous attacks that have been launched against the Vice Mayor by an astroturf group and their acolytes. Apparently, these individuals are apoplectic and are demanding an apology. Seriously, where was their moral outrage when these individuals, with these individuals, when the smear blog was attacking residents in its patented subsimian fashion? Crickets. Where was the moral outrage when a resident with a chronic health condition was branded a drain on society? Crickets. Where was the moral outrage when a frail and elderly woman was branded a narcissist by a smear blogger who probably does not have the qualifications to make such a diagnosis, much less use spell check? Crickets. In summary, I do not agree with everything that Liang says stands for. However, I know her to be an unfailingly decent and honest person, and these qualities make people nervous. People who engage in smear blogs, people who have agendas, people who slink around at political gatherings taking pictures of residents as if they were Savak agents. These are the kinds of people that Liang makes nervous. And it is precisely because she makes these types of people nervous that I'll be voting for her in 2022. Expletives excluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Our next speaker is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Sorry about that. Trying to unmute myself here. Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Tessa, a tenured community member. And I too am here because I was actually reading and participating in the unfortunate event that started in the CUSD thread. And it was the comments that Liang made were definitely taken out of content. But what was really amazing is I realized, oh, election time's coming up. These individuals have already started, and it kind of sets the tone to where they're going to go. I mean, money was spent to make it disseminated so quickly into what's considered black marketing a campaign to tarnish someone's personality. And so I wanted to say, please do not, anyone that is offended or read it and was confused by it, please read the whole comment and Liang's response, a Vice Mayor's response, and then research into the individuals, because it's just a handful of individuals, and connect the dots and see why they would attack her. That's all. Thank you very much. And please, I too will be voting accordingly in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Parish. Tessa, rather. Thank you, Tessa. And thank you for being brief in the comments. Next, we have Alex. Welcome, Alex.
Can council hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Honorable councilmembers of the City of Cupertino, my name is Alex Mavonta, and I'm a twenty-year resident of Saratoga. Before they were incorporated in 1955 and 1956, Saratoga and Cupertino were known as West Side San Jose. In San Jose, Chinese immigrants were the primary workforce in developing Santa Clara County as, quote, "the fruit bowl of America." And San Jose was home to five Chinatowns. Despite the contributions of Chinese workers and laborers, leaders of the City of San Jose were among many who spearheaded the state and federal Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882. And the city held the first state convention of the Anti-Chinese League in 1886. Until the 1950s, Chinese Americans were legally barred from owning property, and they could not accumulate wealth. In San Jose, the Chinatowns, built by the collective efforts of low-wage Chinese workers, were all burned down. Cupertino's city council members have recently discussed issues of education, race, labor, and Chinese-American history. I encourage councilmembers to create a city commission that studies Cupertino's history and role as a part of West Side San Jose and as an incorporated city with respect to discriminatory policies against Asian-Americans in general and Chinese-Americans in particular. This commission may be empowered to produce timely reports and recommend city action, such as creating historic sites or plaques. On September 8, 2021, the City of San Jose unanimously acknowledged and apologized for the role the city played, including statements and actions by elected city leaders against Chinese-Americans. The resolution sought to educate the public of city history. I urge Cupertino to do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex. Our next speaker is Minishu. Welcome, Min.
Hi, thank you, councilmember. I'm a Cupertino resident and the current Park and Reg Commissioner. But today, my speech only represents myself. I joined this oral communication because I saw some biased news on Vice Mayor Chow. The thing started in the discussion of a CUSD Parents Google group. Just to clarify, after reviewing all the discussion in that group, I didn't see anyone tried to support the Chinese Exclusion Act. In Vice Mayor Chow's long, long, long messages, she only said the cause of the act was not only the racism. You may agree with her or not, but she didn't do anything wrong. In this world, not all the bad things happen under the name of the racism. And Vice Mayor Chow only said the background and the cause may be very complex, but that doesn't mean the act was a good thing. She never supported it. And I think the whole thing was exaggerated by someone with personal agenda. I can see that they are really satisfied when they attract so much public attention. Just now, Mr. Dean said it was never personal. But unfortunately, what I saw that it's really not like this. I saw Mr. Dean really take it personally in the Google group after the news. And he just keeps saying, "Hey, Chow, you are famous now. Hey, Chow, your name on the media again." Ha, ha, ha. I have to say, I'm very sorry to see this. It's not the right attitude of communication, especially we are all Chinese-American when we are all local parents in a local group. I hope everyone can respect each other and change an idea freely. We may not agree with each other, but we don't need to worry we got personal attack or cyberbully. Thank you.
Min, that's your time. Next, we have C.C. Zhou. Welcome, C.C.
Hello, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my comments and concerns. I'm also here to support Ms. Liang Fang. She has been helping with our community. Actually, I came from my host community. And she has been helping our community to fight school closure. As you might all know, Cupertino has closed recently. Cupertino School District has closed three schools recently. So I'm trying to share my concerns about the recent social media storm, right? So Liang Fang, I think, you know, Liang Fang has never stated anything in the sense that the Chinese Exclusion Act was not racist ever. You know, her comments have been twisted, and, you know, the media has feeding word into her mouth. And it's just not fair. So I don't understand why are we nitpicking at this right now, right? Is that because some particular party feel that, you know, their interests have been, you know, threatened and trying to use this as a way to shut her down? Let's take a look at what Ms. Liang Fang has, you know, done and or has been working on, right? She is opposing to CRT. She is opposing to the decision to close three CUSD elementary schools. She is opposing to a decision to build a homeless shelter in the center of the city. So let's think hard. Who is behind this, right? Who is driving all this? Why are they so excited to finally find something to pick on Ms. Chow? What is their ultimate agenda? Who benefits from pushing her out? If you disagree with her position on all these issues, use a proper way to collaborate with her and be civilized. This is not the Cultural Revolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Soto. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Paul Soto from Osho. The, this is one of the reasons why I'd stated to the city manager to learn the history of the area. Peter Burnett, who was the first governor of California, and Leland Stanford, that, yeah, that Leland Stanford. Both of them were the co-authors of the Chinese Exclusionary Act. Last Tuesday, the Fallon statue was removed. I was in the room. I've done 18 months' worth of work, research, lobbying, to ensure that that symbol of manifest destiny was removed from public land. And that happened last Tuesday. So the South City Council is going to remove the statue. But on the same agenda, it had the definition of racial equity. San Jose does not have a legal definition for equity. They don't have it. But yet, it's in all of their documents. So I'm encouraging to get, to craft the legal definition so that it becomes objective. Because these issues, what's going to happen is you're going to start pushing policies in order to balance things that have happened in the past. And so that's going to put a lot of pressure on you, and you're not going to be the one, you're not going to want to be the one that is, like, you're making the decision. If you create the equity definition, then you have an objective source by which you are measuring policy. And then it takes a little bit of pressure off of the councils, and you're only serving the principles of justice with respect to applying equity within the context of city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is Sean Hughes. Welcome, Sean.
Hi, thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak today. I do want to comment on Liang Chow's recent comments, and then also more particularly on her defense of those comments, both of which I read in full. But before I touch on that, I'm quite disappointed and honestly not sure how to not be infuriated by insinuations from other members of the community here that I'm somehow represented by interests larger than me. I don't want to waste time on that. But I grew up in Cupertino, and I don't represent anyone other than myself. And I found Liang Chow's comments deeply, at the very least misguided. And if you were to ask any AP US History student to put that on an FRQ, if they still do those nowadays, I don't think you'd pass, you know? The lack of nuance and understanding. Now, racism has occurred in America and manifests to this day, and the effects to this day is really important. And I think we can have a nuanced discussion about this. It's possible for her to be beneficial in other policy areas and also have stances that we disagree with. And it's important for us to voice those disagreements. And I don't think I should be shot down or labeled as astroturfing for doing so. In particular, I think the understanding of disparate effect, disparate impact has a very core relevance to the recent housing element and the affirmative fair housing component of it. And so I just urge Liang Chow, not an apology, actually, more important than apology, I just hope that you approach these matters with a level of nuance that I do not believe is reflected in her recent commentary. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I actually, what I had planned to say just doesn't fit in with what's happening here, and I lost focus. But I must say that it does bother me when a public figure does something outside of the scope of their position as a public figure, just as a regular resident and citizen. Right or wrong, you can agree or disagree, but if people are actually going to ask her or threaten her or demand that she apologize, I don't see a need for an apology for having an opinion, no matter what it is. If it's more than that, because I do not follow this stuff, I don't know. I have very limited knowledge of what this is all about. But I guess I, maybe I'm going to regret talking at all and not just lowering my hand. But this really wasn't what I was going to talk about. And I'll just save it for another time, or I'll send an email what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Gilbert.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy Paul, Vice Mayor Liang Feng Chow, and the City Council. First, I want to say thank you very much to Vice Mayor Liang Feng Chow for acknowledging in her response that the Chinese Exclusion Act is racist. My point is not to embarrass her or, because I really consider her as my friend. It was actively portrayed in the Cupertino Patch, the San Jose Murphy News, and the World Journal about a mischaracterization that CRT and the Chinese Exclusion Act are similar. I think that this is not mutually exclusive. There is no nexus, and it was a poorly used example. I believe that Mayor Darcy Paul and City Council, she looked at this as a learning point for the residents of Cupertino. Now we have ethnic studies that are offered in the high school. And I really acknowledge Lisa Warren's comments that she is not familiar with these issues. And I want to say to my Caucasian friends that the Chinese Exclusion Act has been very helpful. And I call Mayor Darcy Paul to set up a symposium to have residents of Cupertino to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion in a city that's so, so diverse that Vice Mayor Liang Feng Chow loves so much. I encourage Mayor Liang Feng Chow to be mayor next year, I mean, next month for her last year, and I wish her totally the best. But this is the start of a discussion point that I'm really glad that we're having it with a totally number of speakers. I do want to correct Cupertino Personal Rights Commissioner Minna Xu that I do not take this personally, but if you say that we're not taking personal potshots at Yi Ding and I, then why did you write in the medium on potshots against me and Yi Ding? This is uncalled for. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gilbert. Next, we have Kelly Wang. Welcome, Kelly.
Hello, can I mark you?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you to the council. My name is Kelly Wang. I was raised in Cupertino, Wagner Elementary, Kennedy Middle School, and Mona Vista High School alum. I still visit very often because my parents are still here. And I'm here because I still love the city. I was very disappointed to hear about Vice Mayor Liang Chow's comments and how they were reported. I went through the whole, the whole context of it all. And I looked at her response and I put it all in context. And I can respect that we don't always, there's no way for everyone in the community to see eye to eye on everything. And I think we agree more on some things than some might expect. I appreciate her message and most certitably that race isn't the only way to view things in our history. But I find the use of the Chinese Exclusion Act to make that point very bewildering and disappointing, especially for a leader of our community. This is a time when it's harder and harder to be Chinese-American, where prejudice against Chinese-Americans is normalized on both sides of the political aisle. I don't think this is a good time to be trying to minimize that and to not learn from our past when similar sentiments were around. So I think this can be a good learning moment for everybody to uphold the integrity that we respect from community leaders and opportunity to learn about how to speak of this with gravity, speak of this with gravity and some nuance. And thank you so much for giving me the time to speak today, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Kelly. And that takes us to seven forty. I'm going to read off the remainder of the oral communications list. I promise that if we have time prior to midnight, we will get back. And that is Ken Cheng, Randy Shingai, Zi Yuhu, Chris Rotana, Liang Zu, Flora H., Dave, Sal Hua Yang, Wei, Ajian Li, Sudikasam Seti, Jay, Su Juen, Jenny Zhao, and Vera. Those were the hands that were raised prior to our first speaker speaking on oral communications. And again, at the end of the agenda where it says oral communications continued, I will get back to this list, time allowing. All right, so now we are at reports by city council and staff. And respecting once again our time commitments, item number two is a set of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. I do see Councilmember Willie as well as Councilmember Moore with your hands raised. And I'll remind everyone that for this, these are just very brief follow-ups. We're encapsulating them within a minute. And then I also see Councilmember Wei, Vice Mayor Chow, have their hands up in that sequence as well. And so Councilmember Willie, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, to be effective on the city council, you know, we do need to addressing, and in that regard, at Vice Mayor Chow's choice, having additional public comment through, say, eight o'clock. We do have agenda items that run past their allotment. And this is the time to rectify this situation so that we all can be effective on the city council. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So on Wednesday, November fifth, I am a member of the Cal Cities ACA Working Group, also talking about the two thousand and twenty-one zero zero one six initiative. And we're meeting again tomorrow. This is very important for trying to bring back local control. On November sixth, I attended the Saratoga State of the City address. November tenth, the thirtieth anniversary of the forum. It was a wonderful event there. On Thursday, November eleventh, I attended the Sunny View, and I know we had members of the city council as well. I'm trying to do this very quickly. The Sunny View Community Veterans Day Celebration. It was a very wonderful and warm event. And on November fourteenth, on Sunday, I attended the Cal Cricket Awards Ceremony. And Hemant Bhush has done a wonderful job expanding that program. He's got about four hundred cricket players now. They've done extremely well. And one of their own female player was in Zimbabwe playing cricket. And it's very exciting how far they've come.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. You covered a lot of terrain in one minute. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I was out of town all week, so I missed all the activities that you guys attended. But I did come back and Sunday at two P M. I attended the Town of Los Gatos Parade. Los Gatos stands united against hate. It was led by the youth in Los Gatos School District. It was a wonderful event. And a major crowd, estimated over a thousand people were there to support Mayor Mariko and her family and the whole town of Los Gatos to take actions against hate, to say loudly by action that love, not hate, unites people across communities. So I've seen quite a few representatives from other cities. Mayor of Campbell, Mountain View, Sunny View, four of our county board of supervisors, California State Senator Portesi was there, and Central County District Attorney Jeff Rosen was there. And he has promised the crowd that he would prosecute people who attack personally our public officials' families. So it is really an action stand against hate crimes in our communities. So I think Cupertino, we are standing united with Los Gatos too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Could I have three minutes to finish my statement?
No, I'm sorry. I actually have a four-minute statement. So if you want to read the first minute of your statement, go right ahead. But you can submit it for written commentary to the city clerk as well.
Oh, a lot my time.
You don't have remaining time, Councilmember Willie. I want to be.
I really wish that I could finish all three minutes of my statement because it's important.
You know what? I'm going to go ahead, subject that to a motion. If you're going to do that, I have a four-minute statement that I want to read. I don't think that it's, you know, equitable, so I wouldn't necessarily support it. But I would like to hear what other council members have to say about that. I won't bring a motion for it, but, you know, if you want it this time, put that forward. That would be fine.
Could I get a second to allow me to finish my statement?
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow asked to prolong the amount of time that we're allocating for this. And Councilmember Willie, seconds. Are there any other comments on this from council? I don't see. Councilmember Moore, and then, yeah, Councilmember Moore.
I'm concerned about this as a process moving forward. If any of us say something that ends up in the press, are we then going to be dedicating time this way when there are opportunities to do an op-ed or make further clarifications in other ways? Is this how we're going to be handling things moving forward? I'm just a little concerned about that, especially given so much time has been devoted to this topic already. It seems so a forum or some other platform might be better to have this type of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I, in essence, agree with what you're saying. Councilmember Wei, did you have any input on this before we take this to a vote?
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
Can I comment on the motion?
Well, you're the movement, so obviously support it.
This is appropriate because we have so many public comments and people are still online. And there, if we address this in any other forum, it's, this will be the most appropriate forum since we are responding to a lot of community concerns.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up and.
Yes, now I do have a comment. Okay, so my, it's procedural-wise, this is not on the agenda. And there might be other people who's interested in not being listening. So shall we?
Well, this is reports by council and staff. And so, you know, typically, I'm allowing one minute. The reason that we have this agenda item is to follow up, in fact, on oral communications. But it was done so in the spirit of doing that briefly. And so I've been trying to encourage people to write down their thoughts. I would encourage Vice Mayor Chow to do the exact same thing. When it comes time to provide my commentary, I'll keep it within a minute, and I'll refer to the public, to the city clerk's office, as I will write this down and give this to our city clerk for publication afterward. City Attorney Johnson, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to this?
I just wanted to emphasize what you just said, Mayor, is that it's appropriate to have to make brief comments in response to public comment and brief announcements at this time. But it's correct that these items are not agendized. So I strongly encourage the council members to keep their statements brief.
All right, thank you, City Attorney Johnson. And Councilmember Moore, you did have an ability to speak. I'm just giving everyone, you know, that opportunity once, but let me go ahead and take this to a vote. Vice Mayor Chow would like more time to conclude her comments. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, how much time are we allocating?
Just for three minutes, three minutes.
Okay, and this is supposed to be a brief report on council member activities and brief announcements. So we're going to hear a brief announcement, I gather. Okay, aye?
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to vote against this. I vote no.
Motion carries with Paul voting no.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you have your minutes.
Thank you, everyone. I think this will be a brief announcement, no more than other public comments, usually three minutes. Chinese Exclusion Act was racist, no doubt about it. The current California Constitution states the state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, or public contracting. In two thousand and twenty, I have campaigned against Prop sixteen to preserve this very clause, specifically because I detest any policies that divide people by race, either in the past, present, or in the future, whatever was the good intention. I'm glad fifty-seven point two percent of Californian voters choose to uphold this equal treatment clause. Throughout history, racism has been used by opportunist, self-serving politicians to divide people. In this incident, racism has been manipulated again for political gains by taking snippets out of a long discussion on K to twelve education in a members-only local parent group. And their goal is to bring down me, an outspoken Chinese-American woman who has always fought to give voices to powerless grassroots residents. Here, I'd like to thank everyone for the outpouring of support from many of you, those who supported me in the past, and even those who disagreed with me on some issues have expressed their appreciation of what I do. Today, Chinese Americans are still being treated as forever foreigners in our own country. Chinese-American soldiers, scholars, and engineers are targeted by FBI, Homeland Security, and the State Department, even after they have passed security clearances. This kind of discrimination Chinese Americans face is not merely racism. It's much more than that. That was my point. Failing to see other factors affecting discriminatory treatment ignores the nature of the injustice many Chinese Americans faced in the past and still face today, being treated as forever foreigners who somehow cannot be trusted as fellow Americans and who cannot, can be scapegoated to achieve other means. This is wrong. We are proud Americans, just like everyone else. I'm sorry that many people were misled by what they read in social media or headlines in the print media. You are upset because you are against racism. So am I. I invite you to join me to stand up against all racist policies that divide people and also injustice against anyone on the basis of race, ethnicity, country of origin, not only in the past, but also today and in the future. We will solve complex problems facing us only through thoughtful consideration of issues while respecting each other's viewpoints with fairness and stability. Let's make a commitment for a clean election in two thousand and twenty-two without dirty smear campaigns to demonstrate the American values of democracy and freedom of speech. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and keep my timer within a minute here. If you want to see the rest of it, this will be my mayor's corner column for November. Recently, our Vice Mayor Liang Chow has been in the news regarding certain comments that she made in a closed email group discussion with CUSD parents. Regarding the part of Vice Mayor Chow's comments related to the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty-two, I was asked for comment by members of the media, and I stated the Chinese Exclusion Act was obviously racist legislation. I have no further comment on this matter. I don't have any further comment on what I view as the fact of the racism of the Chinese Exclusion Act. However, I would like to make two other statements. First, although I may have certain political disagreements with each and every person at one point or another, I view it as highly inappropriate to misuse those disagreements as motivations for attacking a person with such gusto for other purposes. For instance, in our city, valid disagreements over perspectives on land use and development have, over time, led to smear attacks online and over email, both of the anonymous and the disingenuous varieties. If you want to see the rest of this, please reference the city clerk's office. This will be published thereby, and hopefully I can have an ongoing, you know, writing for the mayor's corner, although that might, you know, very well end next month, of course, because our mayoral term goes from December to December. So thank you very much. Let us go on to the next item on our agenda. That is going to be item number three, a report on our committee assignments. And these are our assignments for committees that we're formal representatives on from the City of Cupertino. Councilmember Moore? Your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So on Friday, November twelfth, I chaired the VTA PAC. We conducted some project funding activities. But kind of very interestingly, on Monday, November fifteenth, the Audit Committee went over the OPAM. the Audit Committee went over the Open Pension Trust Policy and the discount rate, and it was actually a really informative meeting. Our next Audit Committee meeting, we will be going over the Open Gov site. And I think that if the public have been, if there are questions that you have about the budget that you're not readily able to locate on that site, please send in some emails to get that information in a digestible form for you. And then we also went over the HDL contract issues in more detail. So it was a very good session. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, on the 10th, we had our monthly Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting. To me, the high point is the California Community Power, which Silicon Valley Clean Energy is a major party, has put out a bid for 200 megawatts of more clean energy, trying to ratchet up the amount of energy that is clean that they're providing. We also talked about the programs that they have on their website for customers to take advantage of. If you're not aware of those, heat pumps and things of that nature, go to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy website, and you can possibly take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
On the 11th of November, we had the last Santa Clara County and Santa Cruz Airport Roundtable meeting. The group has decided to suspend, and then interested cities might consider forming a new group. And then they have voted to forward the remaining bill to individual cities. There might be a dispute on the bill. I think that council will see at that time. And on the 11th also, the Veterans Day, we had another meeting at the city association. Actually, two meetings at city association, one is Legislative Action Committee. We had a presentation from Senator Dave Cortez, his achievement, and also a presentation of SB 9. ABA is trying to form some kind of guidance for cities. And as for possible units from SB 9 units, HCD is going to publish a guideline on how those units could be counted in housing element early next year. And then, on the same day, we also have the board meeting for city association. And they mostly received the report and forwarded the bill from the roundtable to individual cities. On the 11th, I attended the Audit Committee, which Councilmember Moore has already reported on.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. My only reportable action from committee assignments is from the VTA Board of Directors. As people know, I sit on the VTA Board, one of 12 board members, and my jurisdiction is five cities, the West Valley Cities of Campbell, Cupertino, Los Gatos, Monteserino, and Saratoga. And we are proceeding. To give people a very brief update on where we are legislatively with respect to VTA, Assembly Member Mark Berman, who does represent a very northern section of Cupertino, did put forward legislation in the state legislature this past session to try to essentially upend the VTA Board and to restructure it. That was taken off session, and so we're proceeding right now. My current term on the VTA Board goes for two years, and so I'm right in the middle of that two-year term right now. However, we do have certain issues with the valley transportation, the delivery of services. And I think that from a West Valley perspective, we often look at public transit, and we think, what precisely is it that we're expected to do when there are really no certainly time competitive solutions with the transportation solutions that we have right now? So I want to go ahead and let people know that we are working together as a board to try to resolve a lot of these issues. Obviously, VTA has had quite a few issues over the past year. There was a cyber attack, it was followed by a horrific mass shooting incident, and we continue to deal with the issues related to the pandemic. In this past session, we talked about transit-oriented developments, particularly two in San Jose. And one of the comments that I made was to try to see if we're utilizing measure A funding for helping to develop these transit-oriented developments. I want to make sure that we at least are looking at the most critically needed area, and that's the area of the unhoused. And so hopefully, as the head of the PAC, the Policy Advisory Committee, from our city council, Councilmember Moore, can go ahead on that VTA section, that committee, to go ahead and foster discussion among the cities as to what we think can be done about supportive housing and supportive services for the unhoused in each of these transit-oriented developments. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with TODs, the general concept is try to use funding from things such as housing and perhaps other types of elements such as office to help fund the transit itself. So it is a bit of a step up when it comes to the transit equation, but we also have to be very cognizant of those very issues that we're putting forward in the last several years, which of course has to do with, we don't actually want to make the problem worse if we're putting in things like office in a mixed-use development, especially if we're doing it in the name of transit in this case. So that's my report out as our representative for our five West Valley Cities of VTA. Thanks very much. Our next item on the agenda is our, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wei. Did you have anything, I know your hand's not raised, but did you have any report outs?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So next, we have item number four, our city manager update. Mr. Interim City Manager Larson, did you have an update for us today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Given the number of items ahead of you, I'll try to keep this short. First, a couple of important announcements, given the upcoming holidays and work from our Parks and Recreation Department. First, we are inviting community members to attend, learn, and provide input on two new amenities coming into Wilson Park, a full-size outdoor basketball court and a community garden. To garner that public input and education, we're hosting a virtual community meeting on Tuesday, November 30th at 6:00 p.m. Let's see, the community gardens will be discussed first at 6:00, and the basketball court at 7:00. And we invite all interested community members to come and to register to attend at WP Garden or WP Basketball on the Cupertino.org website. Also, with the holiday seasons coming, we wanted to invite residents and families to join us for the annual tree lighting on December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. The breakfast with Santa Saturday, the next day on December 4th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30. And then signing Santa Saturday on December 11th, singing Santa Saturday, December 11th, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., all at the Quinlan Community Center. And given the pandemic situation, we'll be operating all the events a little bit differently, and we do require registration in advance on the city website. From our pandemic update, just a couple of quick announcements. Testing continues in Cupertino on the first and third Mondays of each month at the senior center. You can book online for the testing. Vaccinations continue to be made available, including boosters, to more and more people, so that's encouraging for the life of the pandemic. And while Cupertino remains one of the strongest, if not the strongest in terms of vaccination rates in Santa Clara County, new information suggests that Santa Clara County will remain in the orange tier through the end of the calendar year. And that means there will be continued indoor mask mandates through the end of the year. And we're just hopeful that continuing vaccinations keep our climate going better in terms of vaccinations, and that the holiday surge doesn't create a surge for vaccinations coming back, because I think we'd all relish an end to the restrictions come the new year, at least some point during the first quarter. Last, as I committed to the council a couple of meetings ago, we'll provide a single update on a council work program item at each meeting. And Lawrence Smithy was not discussed as fully as we expected at the work program update last quarter, so I did just want to provide an update that over the last several months, we did an RFQ process for the design of the master plan for Lawrence Smithy. We received proposals from five firms. Two of those were interviewed, and one was invited to submit a cost proposal that we'll be bringing to council at your next meeting for approval on December 7th. And the program for designing Lawrence Smithy has an extensive amount of community outreach and engagement, not just the Parks and Recreation, but going out to the surrounding neighborhoods to get them directly involved in helping to design this critical amenity on the east side of town. So that concludes staff report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager Larson. Councilmember Moore, I noticed that your hand is raised, but we're not structured for back and forth on this. And so, did you want to make a very brief comment?
Yes, I do. So it is signing with Santa for deaf and hard-of-hearing children along with their families. They're invited to spend time with Santa, who understands sign language. Santa only communicates using sign language, but an interpreter will be on-site to help translate for friends and family. Please join us for cookies, crafts, and of course, a visit with Santa. I thought it was a typo as well. Yeah, this is pretty exciting. I think this could be the first time this has held.
Thank you for the clarification, and that's a very valued. And so, we're on to consent calendar. My fellow colleagues on council, items five through 13, enumerates our consent calendar. Would anyone like to move the consent calendar or have an item that they would like to pull, Councilmember Moore?
I would like to pull item 13.
Okay, item 13 is the consideration of donations from the Library Foundation for the Cupertino Library Expansion Project. And I don't see any other hands raised from the council. I will go ahead and check in with our members of the public. We do have, and I do ask that our members of the public, there are six people that are hands raised. Unless you have a request to pull an item from the consent calendar, I do ask that you lower your hand at this point. Okay, so, thank you for that. I see, I still see four hands raised at this point, so let me repeat this request. We're on our consent calendar. Unless you have a request to pull an item from the consent calendar, that's items five through 12 at this point, please lower your hand, or else I will call on you in order. That is Li Zou, Dave, and Jennifer Griffin. Okay, Li Zou, this regards requests for pulling an item on the consent calendar? Is that what you're requesting?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'll go on to Dave. Dave, did you want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, Dave is not unmuting himself, and so I'm going to go ahead and bring this back to council. May I have a motion for items five through 12 on consent? I see. Councilmember Wei, would you like to move consent, five through 12?
So move.
May I have a second for consent? I don't see a hand raised. I will go, Councilmember Willie, did you want a second?
One second, yes.
Okay, very good. I don't see further hands raised for discussion. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote for items five through 12 on consent?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's start item 13 with Councilmember Moore. Since Councilmember Moore, you pulled item 13 from consent, would you like to express what the concern is or the reason that you pulled it so that staff may guide their report accordingly?
I don't need any discussion on it, it's just that I want to abstain from voting, and I didn't want to abstain from the entire collection that we have in this consent item.
Oh, I see. Okay, very well. And so, there's no request for an agenda item. I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised. Councilmember Willie, did you want to speak to this item?
No, I'll move that item 13.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I'll go ahead and second item number 13. I do see, however, two hands raised from the public still. And so, to notify the members of the public, we are on item number 13 on the consent that has been pulled. Dave, I will unmute your microphone, and if you want to speak on item 13, please do. Okay, so Dave is not unmuting. Gilbert Wong is the other member of the public. Gilbert, if you want to speak on item 13, please do.
Again, good evening, Mayor Darcy Paul, Vice Mayor Liang Fang Chow, and the three council members, and the city manager Greg Larson. I just want to say thank you, Mayor Paul, for working very closely with the Cupertino Library Foundation. We had a great turnout for the fundraising 2.0. I want to really thank Mayor Paul for speaking and the other three council members who did participate. We had Phase 1 sold out of the brick wall that's lit up. The Assistant City Manager and Public Works Department was fantastic to work with, and I think that the quality project on the wall, which allows you to write a statement of what you think about the library, was a huge success at $500 and $1,000 per brick, and a couple of council members did buy a brick. We will have Phase 2, the city of Cupertino has encouraged us to sell out on the other side, and we really look forward to Phase 2 of our fundraising, and we look forward to working with the city of Cupertino to have the grand opening of our Cupertino Library Extension. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Gilbert. Let's take this back to council. I don't see any further hands raised at this time. I do see Vice Mayor Chow's hands raised now. Vice Mayor Chow.
I'd like to thank the Library Foundation, the President Kira, and former Mayor Gilbert Wong, and then Library Commissioner Chin Peng, and many, many other members for their excellent effort to put in on this fundraiser. And then thank the architect for designing the brick wall. I think when it was on the council, it was just an initial idea we should engage the community to fundraise for the library. And then you guys, the Library Foundation has made that a reality, and thank you for all the effort, and then for the staff for everything that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore?
So this one, to me, just seemed kind of awkward to vote on, because as was noted by former Mayor Gilbert Wong, that you did have council members that donated, and it just seemed odd to me to accept my own donation, pretty much. So I don't know if we need advice on that, but it just seemed a little awkward, so that's why this got pulled.
That's a fair point, Councilmember Moore. That actually applies to myself and my family as well. City Attorney Jensen, did you want to speak to that point? Would that be a potential conflict for us to be voting on something that we actually contributed to funding, or at least partly did?
So I don't know the answer to that question right now, but it may be prudent for the two of you to abstain from this vote.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Wei?
I would need to abstain too, because I also did a donation.
Okay, and so, let me do this. Well, actually, City Attorney Jensen, do we need a majority of sitting council? Or do we need a majority of the non-abstaining council to pass this?
So I don't believe there's any specific provision that addresses what a majority is, so the default is that you need a majority of council participating.
Okay. Well, given the fact that our next regular meeting doesn't take place for another three weeks, because this is a Tuesday-filled month of November, I'm a bit hesitant to put this off until December 7th, but let me ask the question, are there any sky's-falling kind of issues with regard to the funding equation of this project or anything else? If we were to look into this particular issue of whether abstentions are required, you know, prior to deciding whether we want to move this to the December 7th meeting?
I would have staff to respond.
Great, thank you, Greg. And Diane, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and City Council. If this item needs to be continued to the December 7th meeting, that would be fine.
Okay, fair enough. Then I withdraw my motion, or the second to the motion, I believe it was. And so, let's go ahead and table this until the following regularly scheduled meeting of December 7th. Thanks very much, everyone. We don't have second readings of ordinances, we don't have public hearings. However, under ordinances and action items, we do have a few items, a couple of which we have either already heard or moved to another action. So item number 14, we've already heard, that was the appointment of the selected candidate, Jim Troop, James Troop, as city manager. And just for benefit of the public, there is an H in the last name, but it is silent, so that's Troop. And item number 15 and 16 are items that we'll still be considering. Item 17, I'll remind the public, has been sent off to referral to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission before it comes back to council. And then, we also have item number 18 before the end of our session tonight. So, we're at 8:16 right now. I think we can get into the city manager's first quarter financial report for fiscal year '21 to '22 before we take a brief break. Is everyone amenable to that? Okay, I'm seeing head nods, no shakes. So item number 15 is that. Mr. Interim City Manager, I know you give me a cheat sheet as to who to call upon, and I'm actually remembering now as I speak on it, that Director Alfaro was the direct presenter and speaker on this item. So, welcome and take away item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm going to be sharing my screen here. Making sure you can see this go to a slideshow. There it is. Again, thank you, Mayor Paul. Thank you, City Councilmember as well. With me this evening, I will have Zach Korach, Finance Manager, co-presenting with me this evening, and I'll take the first half of the report, and he'll take the second half. Before we begin, I just want to take a moment to thank Interim City Manager Larson, all the department directors and department staff that assist us in putting together the first quarter financial report. It really is a citywide team effort to get the support before you, and Zach and I just get the privilege of presenting the highlights. So with that, we have a pretty packed agenda, but it's the agenda that we normally have when we're presenting a quarterly report. The only thing we add at first quarter is looking back at the prior fiscal year and recording on how it ended that prior fiscal year. We're going to bring you up to date on the status of the amended budget. We're going to give you an overall focus of all city funds, but also bring it into the general fund and give you a little more detail on what's happening in the general fund. We'll go over any recommended adjustments. We'll cover any issues or challenges or additional staffing that may be requested. This year, we're adding a couple of new items to first quarter, and those include the review of the city manager's discretionary fund, so any use or anticipated use of that fund. In addition to giving some background on the American Rescue Plan funding and how we use those dollars for the first quarter of the fiscal year, we'll go through the recommendations in the staff report, and finally, give you a little bit of some transparency and engagement efforts that we have. So with that, we always start with our recording cycle, and this is just a reminder, at a minimum how many times we come before council to discuss the city's financial situation. As you may recall, last year, I think we doubled up on the schedule as there was much uncertainty related to the city's financial status due to COVID-19. So right now, this is the reporting schedule that we're on. We're currently on the red box, which is the first quarter report, which covers July through September of 2021, so the '21-'22 fiscal year, and that generally comes a second meeting in November. So like I said, we'll start off with how we ended the previous fiscal year. So in fiscal year '21, what you're seeing in the chart in front of you, the gray bar represents the budget, the red bar represents the actuals, and the light blue bar represents the difference between what we thought was going to happen and what actually occurred. And as you can see from this chart, our expenditures came in lower than we anticipated, and this was due to decreases across all categories, all expense categories. However, we did want to call out just a few of the major ones, one of them being salary and benefits came in lower. That was really driven by vacancy savings from the soft hiring freeze we had for the first half of the fiscal year. In addition, we saw material and contract savings, and that's really attributed to being closed down for a large portion of last fiscal year. And so, we had less people that came in training, conferences, less in-person events for Parks and Rec, and so we saw those reductions come down as well. And lastly, reductions in special projects and capital outlays as we either defunded projects or capitalized assets, and that was really driving that decrease in expenditures. When we turn to the revenue side, that major decrease coming in under what we had budgeted is really related to the plan check contract for a Valco Town Center that had a 65%, 35% split on plan check fees, and as that project has been delayed, we haven't had work come in on that project and thus no fees. But as those fees do come in, we will start to see them incorporating into our actuals as we report out. And then, I wanted to start off, this is a financial overview, we're going over all the funds right now, and then, once we transition to general fund, I'll make sure to point out that we've made that transition. So now, what does it mean, right? What does it mean when I'm sitting here telling you our revenues came in lower, our revenues came in lower, our expenditures came in lower? And really, from the previous slide, what we wanted to focus on were the two red bars, on what actually happened. And when you focus on those, you see a net impact of $19.2 million for fund balance across all funds. And fund balance is really a fancy financial term for savings, right? And so, anytime you have revenues that come in higher than your expenses, you're going to add to your savings. Anytime the opposite happens, you're going to use your savings. And as you can see, broken out by fund in the chart in front of you, the general fund had, it had in addition to fund balance about 22.4, and the rest of the funds had a plus or minus, so some using fund balance, some not. I want to take just a quick moment, I want to make sure that when we talk about fund balance, we don't only see it as a, we don't see it as a negative thing if we're using fund balance. I'm going to use capital projects as an example. As council may recall, generally, as part of mid-year, we'll transfer usually anywhere from $1 million to $15 million to the capital project fund, specifically to the capital reserve. But we don't always program that money right away. Some of it may get programmed when we do the capital improvement plan, but some of it may not. And so, what happens is when those dollars don't get used, they fall to fund balance. But in subsequent years, as you're adding more projects, or as more costs related to previously approved projects come on, that's when you'll see us start to draw down that fund balance. And so, the only time we really worry about fund balance being used is when it shows up as a structural deficit, which is not the case in the city. So with that, we want to walk you through how we got to our current amended budget. You'll hear amended budget referred to as the legal budget, and this is basically the current authority the city has to spend as of September 30th, 2021. And that number is $225 million. And so, how we get here is, we started with the proposed budget, that was $121 million. Final budget brought that number up to $148.8 million, and that was related to, in addition to adjustments made since proposed budget, the main reason why it jumped up so much was the inclusion of the capital improvement plan. In addition, since then, we've had budget adjustments of $76.8 million. And in the following chart, I'll go just into slightly more detail on kind of how this breaks out. So when we look at appropriation changes since the adopted, this table on the far left has the respective fund. It has the budget as was adopted in our big budget books that we print, and since then, we've had carryovers of $53.9 million. And what carryovers are, is an approval of appropriations that council has made in the previous year, and departments request to carry over that budget. And what departments have to do is ensure that they're using it for the same purpose for which council approved it. Those are carryovers. Then we have incumbences. And incumbences are generally tied to a contract, there's a legal obligation to pay, and that's generally for a project or a service in the previous year where that hasn't been completed, and that gets carried over into the next fiscal year. Lastly, we have adjustments approved in first quarter, and these are separate staff reports that go to council for approval. The largest amounts really here are related to the American Rescue Plan funding and to work program related, item related to Vena, I'm sorry, Vena. And that brings our total to $225.6 million. And if anybody's interested in getting a little more detail about the carryovers and the incumbences, or the adjustments approved in first quarter, those can be found as attachment C to the staff report. Next, we're going to go into our general fund focus portion of the presentation. This chart here is meant to show a trend analysis, so looking back at the previous three years of where we've been at first quarter in respect to revenue and expenditures against where we ended the fiscal year. So the bars are the low and the high end, the triangle and bold percentages are where we are for fiscal year '21-'22. And so, the good news is, our revenue is tracking higher than previously, and I'm going to talk about why in a subsequent slide here. And our expenditures are tracking lower. And again, this is all good news, because it shows that we're potentially tracking to have another good year where we're continuing to add to the city's fund balance. So let's talk about why revenues are tracking a little bit better than they had last year. And when we're talking about sales tax, we're, I'm sorry, talking about revenue for the general fund, overall revenue is up $6.3 million, or 40% compared to the same time last year. And as you can see, there's a few items folded on this table that we're going to cover. The main reason why revenues are up are really related to intergovernmental revenue and transfers in, and these dollars really relate to American Rescue Plan dollars that the city has received this year. If we were to pull out the value of those dollars from the American Rescue Plan, we'd really be looking at a reduction in revenue over prior year of about $1.3 million, or 8%. And that, and as you can see, that's really driven by our sales tax number. You can see at the first line there up on top, we're down about $1.5 million from prior year, and this was really to be expected. As council may recall, as part of our proposed and final budget hearings, and I believe our third quarter report last year, we spoke about the positive impact that the pandemic had on our sales tax revenue. As everything closed down, as businesses got ready to do telework on a more consistent ongoing basis, that all resulted in a positive impact to the city's sales tax. Now, as things are opening up more, people can get out to brick and mortar stores, we can see that impact it's having on our sales tax. This is something we're going to continue to monitor, it's kind of uncharted territory, so we're really trying to figure out what is our mean normal, kind of, I'll say, a post-pandemic. I know we're still in the pandemic, but as more things open up, as we really start to get past it, we'll have to develop a strategy or some sort of bottoming out that we say, okay, this is what we think is our mean normal for sales tax. We'll continue to hear us talk about sales tax as the year progresses. Moving on to the expenditure side, you can see that our expenses are up $7.2 million overall, or 28%. And we've highlighted a few categories here again that we want to discuss. I do want to point out, if anybody does want more information than I'm giving this evening, or wants information about the other categories, there are write-ups in the staff report that cover the changes that are happening in these other categories. And here, I want to focus on two items. One is kind of our ongoing expenses, and one are maybe some one-time things that are happening that are really causing the major increase. But I wanted to point out, employee compensation and benefits are up, which makes sense. Again, the first half of the fiscal year last year, we were on a soft hiring freeze, so we would anticipate that these costs would be coming up. The next is contract services. This was an item that was down previous years, again, as we had less in-person events happening for Parks and Recreation, potentially less projects happening in Public Works. This number was down, but we're starting to see it come back up to very close to pre-pandemic level, so we anticipate that that will continue. And lastly, in the transfers out category, this is really kind of the offset to the transfers in in revenue. This is mostly related to American Rescue Plan dollars, and this is really the movement of those American Rescue Plan dollars out of the non-departmental department into the actual department and the general fund that are using to use as a match for the revenue loss that we claim for those American Rescue Plan dollars. And in a subsequent slide, we'll go into more detail on how we're matching those dollars up and kind of refresh everybody's memory on the plan that was made on how to use those So with that, and I should have probably started, that I'm going to give you a bit of a fund balance sandwich in my presentation. So we started with fund balance, and we started talking about the impact that last fiscal year had to fund balance, and we talked about that $19.2 million. And so, what I want to do in this next table is a couple of things. The first thing is, when we talk about fund balance for the general fund, or any fund the city has, is it's not just a big bucket of money. There are actually different dollar amounts put into different classifications, and the classifications are over here to your left. And each classification, and this can be found in the city's budget book, but each classification has restrictions around it for how it can be spent. The one classification that does not is unassigned fund balance, and so that's that green bar you see across the bottom of the screen. And what you can see in unassigned fund balance, as part of the adopted budget, we were anticipating having an unassigned fund balance of $35.7 million. Now, given how we've ended the prior fiscal year, and what we're seeing happen as of the first quarter of the fiscal year, we're actually thinking we're going to be closer to that $64.47 million. And why this is important is that is a large number. And I know a lot of times, or recently, we've been getting asked, what is the, what are the dollars amount that the city has free and clear, you know, should we want to do an event or a CIP project that maybe isn't funded, or a special project? And I would say the closest we can come to giving you that number is that unassigned fund balance number. However, I will caveat that with, we always look at this number not in a vacuum, not as a one-time, we're looking at it and looking at our future forecasts, making sure we don't have any of that program to be drawn down. We want to make sure we have all of our other assignments in our other categories taken care of as well. We want to make sure if there's anything big coming, we're setting those things aside. And with that in mind, and as part of the report, we're actually recommending $42 million be either put in other categories or transferred to other funds, and that recommendation will come as part of mid-year. We want to preview that this evening with the council. And what we're really going to be recommending at mid-year, we think, is movement of dollars to the capital reserve, the creation of a new assigned reserve for future capital projects in the general fund, funding the fourth and the fifth payment for the 115 trust, and updating our committed assignment on economic uncertainty based on our reserve and one-time use policy. And so, those can be found, the actual dollar amounts tied to those can be found in the staff report. Again, we're not recommending those for first quarter. We want to get another three months under our belt, but we anticipate being very similar, if not those, recommendations as part of mid-year. And so, with that, that concludes kind of the financial overview and fiscal status of the city. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Zach, who'll take you through the department recommendations.
I'm going to request control once more. Sorry, I needed to unmute myself there. All right, so on the slide before you, we have a comprehensive look at all of the recommended adjustments as a first quarter, and we'll be going through a number of these in more detail. For the purposes of time, we won't be covering each and every one, but they are detailed in the staff report, or if you have additional questions, we'd be happy to address those after the presentation. In total, across all city funds, the total additional appropriation request is $1.6 million. Of those requests, $500,000 will be offset with revenue, and the remainder, or $1.1 million, will come from existing fund balance. and the remainder, or one point one million dollars, will come from existing fund balance. And so we'll be looking at a number of these adjustments going, um, going in order by department. And starting with administration, we come to the economic development functional transfer. Uh, with the conversion of the economic development function from being contracted out to staffed internally and with the recent hiring of the city's economic development manager um that took place in October earlier this year, staff recommend transferring the budget unit and its appropriations from the community development department to the administration department. And this function, the primary purpose for this request for this transfer is that the function will be overseen within the city manager's office moving forward. Um, so on this slide, we see that the expenditures are increasing within the administration department by the total economic development budget. When we get to the community development slide, we'll see that reduction offsetting. Um, next is an economic development strategic plan research. Um, this is a request that will be used for additional consulting services to assist the newly hired economic development manager to update the economic development strategic plan, a plan that has not been updated since two thousand sixteen. And staff believe it is uh most imperative at this point in time as we um move through this pandemic towards a recovery. Administrative Services is requesting a, an increase in appropriations of two hundred thousand dollars for Plan JPA liability insurance premiums. Over the last two years, costs related to these general and property liability premiums have increased remarkably, um, nearly thirty-six percent on average in each of the last two years. And those were increases, annual increases that were um nearly impossible to, to anticipate. Um, so this two hundred thousand dollar request would provide sufficient funding for those premium expenses as well as providing substantial funding or sufficient funding for any unforeseen claim settlements that may occur over the course of the fiscal year. Next, we have a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar request for a CIP management system. This request is going to be housed in the Innovation and Technology Department, but it is working in tandem and in collaboration with Public Works and the CIP team. Um, the funds here will be used to develop a much-needed CIP management solution that will manage all the project details, including items such as scheduling, budgeting, scope documents, reporting, and archiving. Um, with a um, with a regular amended budget of, for the CIP upwards of forty-five to fifty million dollars in projects between fifty and sixty in volume, um, it has become imperative to have a more robust CIP management system to help facilitate the day-to-day operations and project management. And this is a one-time request of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, but it does come with a seventy-five thousand dollar ongoing cost. Community Development, as we talked about earlier on the administration slide, we see the three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar reduction in that budget. Parks and Recreation is requesting sixty-five thousand dollars to address the golf course netting replacement. The wood poles that are supporting the whole, the, the, excuse me, the wood poles that are supporting the netting along holes number eight and number nine at the Blackberry Farm Golf Course have failed and do require replacement. So these funds would be replacing the netting um and mitigating and preventing um any, any future incidents um for resident safety. Moving into Public Works, uh, as a department, the total request is eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, there are a number of requests, and as I mentioned, we'll just be covering a few of these, but the additional details are in the staff report. Um, for QCC tree removal and replacement, um, the Quinlan Community Center um has experienced a number of trees that have reached the end of their life um and have become a safety issue for the public. There've been five documented instances of limb failures, um, three of which I believe have actually made contact with vehicles parked below them. Um, and so this fourteen thousand dollar request is, is an essential, um, is an essential ask. Memorial Park softball fencing, um, this again is a safety um hazard mitigation request, thirty-two thousand dollars uh to prevent foul balls from exiting the field of play um and endangering the public. This would extend the fencing down the third base line all the way to um to that foul ball, foul pole, excuse me. City Hall HVAC ventilation request, this is for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A recently completed analysis of the HVAC system have revealed that improvements are recommended to ensure uniform air circulation throughout the building, and I believe specifically for the second floor at City Hall. Um, staff did in fact consider taking no action to further enhance the airflow so as to limit further spending on the aging equipment at City Hall until a more clear plan is put into, into action regarding City Hall itself. Um, however, with ventilation becoming an increasing, um, increasingly critical component to managing COVID-nineteen transmission, um, staff have deemed this repair essential. Now, there are a number of requests here um that begin with library. Um, as part of the most recent amended lease agreement with, between the city and the Library District JPA, um, operating capital maintenance costs that are incurred by the city will be billed to the Library District and reimbursed accordingly. And that's why we see these, for these library requests, expenditures with offsetting revenue. We have one more here at the top for security enhancements that will be billed to the library at the end of the fiscal year. Um, the next item is a service center automatic gate installation, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the existing vehicle gate that provides access to the back of the service center is manually opened at the beginning of the day as well as at the end of the day. Um, and it was during the month of August this year that a member of the public had walked through the open gate and threatened the safety of a city employee on city property. Um, and as a result, staff are requesting this funding, which will be used to install a gate that automatically opens and closes only for city personnel as well as deliveries. And this is a full package request that will cover the gate, the fencing, asphalt modifications, as well as the electrical installation. Um, next is the adaptive traffic signaling. This is a city work program item, um, and this is an additional request for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The original budget item um as part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one work program, I believe it was, was for a hundred and sixty thousand. Staff had planned for the funding allocations to be spread over two years, and that was in anticipation of prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, a biennial budget where we were gonna be budgeting for, in this case, this project all at once as part of a two-year budget. But with the onset of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the biennial budget project was postponed. Um, and during the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget, this second year allocation was erroneously omitted, and so staff are before you not requesting a change in scope. Um, the scope of this project has remained the same since its inception. It's just to ensure that staff have sufficient funding and authority to move forward and complete the project. And then lastly, within the Public Works Department, is security surveillance for Lawrence Midney. This is a forty thousand dollar request. Um, the future Lawrence Midney Park site is a vacant parcel of land where several encampments do exist. The city has been working with abode services as well as the sheriff's department um to coordinate the needed services for these individuals and to secure the site from further trespass. Um, the purchase of this system will allow for continuous monitoring um of the property by the sheriff and also will be available for use at other locations once the park is developed and in use. And then lastly, um, this is a, a non-departmental request for two hundred thousand dollars. What's going on here is, this is related to the Wolf Road Encampment Transfer, and this is taking us back to the fall of twenty-twenty. Um, it was on November nineteenth in twenty-twenty that City Council had approved a transfer of two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the Below Market Rate BMR Housing Special Revenue Fund. This transfer was to fund emergency assistance to assist the unhoused members at the Wolf Road Encampment. Now, subsequent to um, to this authorization and council action, the Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, had released um new guidance regarding the allowable uses or eligible uses of Community Development Block Grant, or CDVG, coronavirus grant funds that essentially made those types of services eligible for grant reimbursement. So as a result, the costs that were associated and the payments made to abode services for the two hundred thousand dollars, those were recorded in the city's CDVG Special Revenue Fund and reimbursed accordingly. Um, and now, bringing us up to um, to today, wanting to make the general fund whole, we're now requesting council to consider transferring that two hundred thousand dollars from the BMR Special Revenue Fund back to the general fund. Now, as for staffing, there are no recommended changes to current staffing levels. Um, but we did want to inform council, um, as many of us have, have been informed and made aware. Um, many organizations, both in the public and private sector, have been experiencing what we refer to as the Great Resignation. Um, and the city of Cupertino has not been immune to this trend and has been affected by the impacts of labor shortage at all levels within the organization. Um, the city is experiencing significant amount of staff turnover due both to resignations as well as retirements. And as a result, the city's recruitment efforts have been greatly impacted. Um, there were several, several positions that were out for recruitment that required multiple recruitments, and that was due to a number of reasons, uh, reduced applicant pools, competing, um, competing job offers, as well as unexpected resignations. And while the city does in fact offer a very competitive salary and benefits program, a robust telework program, our recruitment efforts do continue to struggle. I mean, we can see this evident in the table before you. The reason why we are informing city council is that in the event that these trends do continue, um, there might be an increased need for temporary and or intermittent um contract services to fill that gap and ensure that the city is able to provide services with little to no disruptions. Um, staff did uh promise to city council to report out periodically um, and during the quarterly budget reports, the use of the city manager discretionary fund. Um, as you'll recall, city council had directed staff to reduce the city manager discretionary fund from the proposed amount of five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars. And that was what was adopted um for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And as a first quarter, there had been no uses of the discretionary fund. But we do wanna give city council a heads up that staff are anticipating using a portion of these funds, approximately fifty thousand dollars, to provide free feminine products in various restrooms throughout the city. And of course, staff will continue to report out to city council on the fund's use. I'll try not to spend, take too much time on the American Rescue Plan Act, as I know um Director Alfaro had covered it um, covered it previously. Um, but in short, the city was awarded nine point seven million dollars. That was to be received over two fiscal years. The city received four point eight million or the first half of the, of the payments um or of the award in May of twenty-twenty-one. Of the four point eight million dollars in funding, two point eight million dollars have so far been recognized um in revenues. And it was at the September seventh, two thousand twenty-one uh city council meeting, the staff had recommended the city council approved the allocation of these ARP funds to go towards revenue loss. Um, the revenue loss was a provision under the American Rescue Plan Act where, as stated in the title, revenue losses were in eligible use of these grant dollars. Now, at this point in time, staff do anticipate realizing these losses before December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. That date is important because that represents the end of the, of the period of availability where we are allowed to measure the extent revenue losses that have been experienced due to COVID-nineteen. Um, this action does allow the city to maintain current levels of operations and government services and also afford city council the continued ability to consider new projects and initiatives in the future. Um, and as Christina had mentioned, the budget modification in September of twenty-twenty-one, the council had approved, that moved four point eight million dollars from the general fund's non-departmental department into all of the other departments within the general fund. And that was done for one primary purpose, and that was for substantiating and reporting the use of the grant dollars that were received. Um, as the expenditures are incurred, the revenue losses are realized. And so we're seeing here, we've got a list, and we'll find this on the second to last, as well as the last page of the staff report. We have a, a full list of the items that were communicated to council that were going to be spent and funded by the, by the ARP dollars. Um, but to date, this is the, the list of actual expenditures, which comprised the two point eight million dollars in revenues that have been recognized. And we will be um continuing to report out on the ARP used to city council on a quarterly basis. As for the recommendations, I won't read these as I, you know, we have them in the agenda packet um for next steps. Uh, and as it pertains to the current fiscal year, will next be before you in early March of twenty-twenty-two to present the mid-year report. And then finally, third quarter report will be coming in May of twenty-twenty-two. And on the front of transparency and engagement, um, we do want to draw folks' attention to the OpenGov online portal where we take all of the information, the financial information that's included in the staff report and the financial report in this agenda item, and we bring it to life, we make it interactive on the OpenGov online platform where online viewers can drill into accounts um and, and explore through the city's financial data in real time. If anybody that's viewing this right now wants direct access, all you have to do is scan the QR code. Um, and then last but not least, um, if you have been, um, if you do follow the city's social media accounts or you have not yet followed, I recommend doing so because the city, um, the city's budget team as well as the communications team has been working hard over the last, um, the last few weeks putting together short budget videos, um, particularly related to the budget process and the first quarter report. Um, so with that, that will conclude our presentation, and we'll turn it back to city council for any questions.
Okay, great, thank you very much, city staff. Um, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to members of the public that have any comments. And then we can bring it back to council for uh questions and as well as follow-up comments. Um, I don't see any members of the public with their hands raised on this item. And so let me give people a few more moments to raise their hands. Again, this is item number fifteen. This is the first quarter financial report for our current fiscal year, and that would have ended in September. Uh, I still don't see any hands up, so let me bring it back to council. And so, uh, council, if we have any questions for either the uh staff members that presented or comments on the first quarter uh report, please uh make those right now. I don't see the hands raised at this point either, uh, which tells me that um we're either doing a fantastic job or uh people wanna take a break. No, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
So, not to disappoint you. So, uh, first, a question, um, I think for HDL contract, we know that uh they, it has an unexpected increase because of ours, we need to service small businesses. I wonder if those expenses qualify under APA?
Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, that's a very good question. Um, you know, given, given council's direction to allocate the ARP dollars um solely for revenue loss, um, I would have to go back into the guidance and see if there are in specific provisions um mentioning small business assistance. Um, but with that said, uh, because those revenue loss dollars, um, or, excuse me, because the ARP dollars have been directed towards revenue loss, um, that more or less frees up um fund balance in the general fund and effectively can be used for other projects or initiatives at city council's discretion, if that makes sense.
Okay, and another question is uh regarding community garden lock replacement. We, this is for the new community garden, we just had the opening on, right? So why do we already need a lock replacement?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. Yeah, good evening, Vice Mayor Rogers and Director of Public Works. The um, the, it is for the new gardens, right, at the Col and Ranch Preserve? And users would, would get in, gardeners would get in, and uh it would get locked from the outside, and people could get locked inside the gardens inadvertently. And, and so now it has a push, you know, has a push bar to where they, they can get out, and then there's, there's a punch pad to where people can get in.
So the old the gate, uh, we, this doesn't, didn't fit our use, and now we have to replace it?
Uh, the gate was, the gate's fine. It's, what this is for is to replace the lock so that uh
Yeah.
gardeners don't, they just don't get locked in um by accident.
Okay, another thing is the Linda Vista uh lockdown gate. I remember that it did have a gate that, so, so that trail will be locked down at sundown, right? So we will have staff person going out there to lock it?
Uh, yes, that, that was the commitment to, to the, the residents there.
And this, this cost of nine thousand is for the gate or the, for the staffing cost to lock it down?
That, that's the, yeah, it's the contract janitorial service that they're the ones who, we use to, to do the closing.
It's for the staffing cost?
Yes.
Okay. Then my question is for the Regnar Trail. I remember the residents request to have a gate, and that would have to be locked down. And I kind of remember the staff said that's not possible. So why is it that we could do it for Linda Vista, but not Regnar Trail?
Well, anything's possible. It's just that wasn't part of the project. We are going to monitor and see how it would work. And it, it may come to that once the trail's open and we see how it's used. And if there are any of the issues that the residents were concerned with, then, then we would look at that. But we just weren't going to start, start with that.
I'm trying to understand. So the staff thinks it's, Rick, staff recommends to lock down Linda Vista Trail, even have to go out manually every day to lock it down. For Regnar Creek Trail, which is closer to City Hall, and staff is not recommending installing a gate and lock it down?
Well, it was, it was just a wait-and-see approach, if you recall. If that's, yeah, we'll, we'll just wait and see, and we may make that recommendation if there are any issues.
I kind of feel there is equity issue here. Yeah. And for the CUSD cost share for school field areas, could you explain a little bit what this does?
Yeah, and, and the Stormdrain ballot that was approved, that was, was at 2019, for the actual fields that are part of the joint use agreement, we are, we are, we agreed that the city will pay the Stormdrain fee for that area of land. And so we reimburse the school district for that, for those fields. And, and that was just inadvertently, you know, missed in the budget process. Yeah.
Great. So for Wolf, Wolf Road encampment, I remember we only paid for the hotel for about six months. The time is almost up, right? So do we need additional fund for that?
That, that's, that was not me.
Is that?
I can answer part of that while staff is coming on, as need be. We've been in discussion with the Bode. They are continuing housing at their own expense, using resources they have available from the county and fundraising, I believe, to continue providing housing attempting to place the remaining residents. But you're right, Vice Mayor, our funding has expired and they've not requested new. And they are continuing their placement efforts. They've not set a specifically expected date for people to be out, because that creates other challenges. But they are looking for the program to wrap up in the first quarter of 2022. But our financial contribution is what it is, and no more is requested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have Councilmember Willie, followed by, by Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, actually, Vice Mayor Chow's actually covers a little bit of it. You know, what I was seeing is the 200,000, but I thought we allocated 250,000. And so that's kind of a question there. And then I guess I'll continue. So it sounds like it's fully used up. So we don't know what the prospects are for those, for those residents that were then put in transitional housing. And then the third aspect is now we have ownership of Lawrence Smitty. And it sounds like there's two camps there that we should also be anticipating. You know, how we're going to accommodate those individuals such that I'm thinking it would be prudent to come back to us fairly soon. I like being proactive, not reactive. But come back fairly soon with an estimate of an additional allotment to cover where we're at and these new unhoused residents that we know of. So, any comments, it may be for the city manager, or from Zach and Christina, if we actually can tap into another bucket to take care of that?
Well, I can certainly handle some of it. Zach or Christina, I'll need you to refresh whether it was 250 or 200. All I remember is when I followed up with staff on that, the full Wolf Road funding has been utilized through our contracts with Adobe and others in the, the work that was done then. I know that because I was wondering, gee, do we have money left over? We could apply to Lawrence Smitty or elsewhere, and we didn't. So that's kind of how I knew that answer. But I agree completely. We're trying to be proactive on both of those. And it actually goes back to my first walking tour of Cupertino that the mayor took me on. And we went over to Lawrence Smitty, and numbers had grown over the course of about two weeks, from a couple of encampments to, I think the mayor and I, without getting too close, counted that there was maybe 10 to 12 encampments. So that mobilized staff to immediately start working on site, having a presence on site at least six days of the week, using the Bode, West Valley Services, Public Works, and County Sheriff, as our police department, to really have a constant presence. I believe the last count was down to two to three campsites and continuing to work in finding locations for them. And we've been proactive with the work program, accelerating that for the homeless jobs program and engaging West Valley Services to target residents first at Lawrence Smitty for possible placement in those two positions being created out of the council work program. Well, the item on your agenda tonight, for the $40,000, is for security installation, because we are finding repeated vandalism of our fencing and security there, as well as trespassing. And so the security system we're putting in has two real benefits. One, it creates an automatic detection and lighting system with immediate notice to the sheriff, so that if we have new vandalism or avocation that's unexpected, it is immediately dealt with before encampments become entrenched. And the beauty of the system is it's relocatable, as the city needs for capital projects. Anyplace the city needs security of any sort, it will be a resource that we'll be able to draw upon. We also are planning, and I believe the, the mayor has done a tour again of the Lawrence Smitty site, looking at the berm work that's out there and work we want to do that might be related to the memorial ponds when we pull out the old concrete ponds in the spring, to use the burns and tiles of dirt out at Lawrence Smitty and fill for those ponds before we re-saw them. And that's not a guarantee yet, but the timing might align, that we can do both of those next spring. The last item we're looking at proactively is the pruning of the trees out there. There are some environmental considerations. We're given there is a watershed. We can't do anything that hurts native habitat. And so we have to time our trimming of the trees. But all of that increases security and safety of Lawrence Smitty and also prepares the site for the redesign work we want to do. We have been trying to address several council requests I've received for regular updating of the challenges or opportunities for people who are unhoused in Cupertino. Most jurisdictions try to keep counts and encampments fairly confidential by sites, so as not to create a targeting of people who are already in a very difficult situation. And so we're trying to figure out the best way to address that now. But I certainly take to heart what you said, because I know it's what staff believes as well, that it's best to be proactive rather than wait and see. And we've been trying to do that since I first visited the site, and we will certainly continue to do so. And the 200 to 250, Zach or Christina, can you refresh my memory on that one?
Sure. So, Councilmember Willie, I believe it was on November 19th of 2020, where the initial $200,000 had come from. That was a transfer from the general fund to the BMR Housing Special Revenue Fund. Now subsequently, and I believe it was on June 15th of 2021, Community Development had brought an item that was updating, making substantial amendments to, to the fiscal year 1920 action plan. And as a result of that, it was communicated and approved that the Wolf Road encampment program would be increased from that 200,000 to 234,000. So I'm not sure if it ever got quite to 250, but as of that item, I mean, it, you're, you're correct, it did exceed the 200,000 that, that was initial. And just for clarification purposes, the, the budget request before you this evening is simply, it's more administrative to bring that original transfer of $200,000 that was sent to the BMR Special Revenue Fund back to the general fund, because a new funding source, in this case, the, the Community Development Block Grant, grant funds, those were used, or we were able to, to deem those activities COVID-19-related and thereby making them eligible for the CDBG CV funds.
So that's really just a transfer of funding, not new funding, transfer of a source of funding, not new funding.
That would, I mean, that's great to hear. It kind of prompts the thought, though, that with the Lawrence Smitty, and I, I also thought I heard that there is a new encampment off of 280 at the Anza Boulevard. And so now if we, wow, we're the beneficiary. Whoever got out to get that grant, great. We've got this 200,000 before we move it back into a general fund to be sure that we're able to take care of these other residents that may need assistance. You know, I think that would be an easier way to go about it. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Wei.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm, I'm looking at the, this would be our adopted budget for 2122. The expenditures for the city attorney office, 1.9 million. And then from this Community Development Department, we have another $500,000 for special project legal fees. Funding source is the general fund, and that's a legal fee estimate for current planning projects for fiscal year 2122. And one thing that kind of pops out is we have contract services at 1.77 million and employee compensation at only 113,000. Has, has this been adjusted in the budget to reflect that we've moved to in-house city attorney? And then the other issue I have is with this 500,000 in legal fees, because that, you know, you add that together, we're at, you know, 2.4, almost 2.5 million. And we were trying to rein in our legal costs, so I'm, I'm concerned about that. And that, that's my first question, and then I've got some other to follow up.
So, so I can address the, so there, there has been an adjustment, a transfer from contract services to, to fund salary and benefits for your in-house attorney legal team. That's entirely within the city attorney's office budget. I could let Director Fu speak more to the money in CDD budget. There's a number of uses for that, including CDD retaining special counsel. And I, I believe special counsel for VAALCO is paid out of that budget. There are no new requests for funding from the city attorney's office in, in this package that's coming to you. So we could certainly give you an update on spending, but there's certainly no new request for funding that we're making.
Okay, so personally, I think for the public that the attorney's fees should be all grouped together, rather than having them scattered around in different departments like this, because it, it doesn't really give a full picture of what our legal expenses are. So I would want those grouped together. And it is my understanding that when I look at this, the budget, that as long as, as long as an item is in the general fund category, the monies can be moved. So my assumption was that if I saw an item that said contract services, and for instance, if it was a, a contract services for, oh, let's say, well, we had it for economic development. We had a contract services amount. And it, my belief, which appears to be incorrect, was that if, if a contract was going to be entered into that was larger than what was in the, the budget, I thought it would have to come to council to have the, the money re-appropriated and, and moved into, into that category. But it's my understanding that that's not the case, that the city manager has the authority to move money within the general fund into that category. So if, if a contract services amount was, I'm going to say guesstimated at 100,000, but then you need to, you need actually 150,000, that the, the city manager has the authority to do that. And also that, I'm talking about the, the $500,000 in, for legal services in CDD, that that's a general fund amount that actually could get pulled out of that department and moved to another department as well. That, that there's a lot of leeway within our, the, the budget authority that we have currently for a, a lot of movement of money. And, and, and some cities have other rules about this. So I'm, I, I'd, I'd like for the public to understand what our, what our rules are and policies are about the movement of money within our budget. And then, and, and have some comparison about what's going on in other cities as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to this, I'm actually preparing a report to council on this very topic. First, our standard for the city of Cupertino is no different than the standard I had as city manager of Los Catos, or that exists in at least eight other cities in Santa Clara County, not including San Jose, which I didn't look at because it's just too large and not a comparator. And indeed, the city manager does have authority in all of those cities, including Cupertino, to move funds within, to move dollars within funds. You cannot do any movement between funds, and you can't increase the total appropriations or revenues of the city or any fund without council approval. And the perfect example is one that came up earlier, and I had to face this during the Great Recession, where we were holding vacancies because we knew we had to reduce staffing. And so I approved movement of funding from personnel over to contract services, because I didn't want to lower the quality and level of services that the city was providing to the residents of Los Catos. But with the Great Recession, we had to retain vacancies so we could reduce funding and services as the council chose in the next budget cycle. And so that's a perfect example of where the manager needs some flexibility to implement the council's budget direction in light of changing circumstances of personnel and, you know, other activities. However, there's always a transparency component that comes with that. And that, to the extent we can hold transfers off to each of the quarterly reviews, we do. You know, I'll, I, I only approve transfers mid-reviews if they're needed. And we hold them off to the first quarterly review. And any that are done during the first quarter are communicated to council during the quarterly budget reviews. I believe those are attachments B and C, or C and D of the report, shows you transfers and changes that have occurred in the budget since the budget was first adopted, including carryovers and encumbrances, which happen for every city, as well as staff-approved changes to the budget, which are reported out to council. Anyway, I'm preparing a more comprehensive report on this for the council with the information about what happens in other cities. And that we're following the norm of the other cities in Santa Clara County.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any further follow-up, Councilmember Moore, at this time?
Uh, no, that's it for now. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Wei?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I have a couple of questions. So on the city manager's discretion, which is $75,000, it looks like we're going to spend $50,000 on the feminine products. But I thought the $75,000
But I thought the seventy-five thousand dollars is formal for emergency use. For example, if there's a leak, the city manager can authorize it right away. I don't consider the fifty thousand dollars for feminine products as emergency. So is there any way we can find money somewhere to cover that so we can still leave the seventy-five thousand dollars for the city manager's uh discretion? Because, you know, it it's it's for emergency use. That's my first question. The second, I want to come back to the Linda Vista uh trail uh gate. The Linda Vista Park is being opened and closed on sunrise and sunset every day already. So this addition to lock the gate, it should be, it, is this, that, isn't that we already have personnel that's doing it? It's just going to the trail to lock it? So uh, do we need that much budget for just an addition to the work? Because it's being opened and somebody's going to open every morning and close the gate already on the park. So this is the trail. So uh, that's my question. Can this two can be combined as one job uh cost?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Wei.
Why don't you go first, Roger?
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. Correct. Um, you are correct that Linda Vista Park is open and closed with a gate. And um, and the price here is, I believe, taking into consideration that service already being provided. Uh, but but Chad, I see you have your, your screen on. Am I getting that right?
Uh, that's correct. This is above and beyond uh costs that we already incur for the closing of gates and restrooms at Linda Vista Park. Um, we had worked with our uh contract services provider for uh those those facilities and and this is the cost for for yearly. Now, keep in mind, this is for every day and this is for closing the gates on both sides of the trail.
Okay, so that's in the addition.
Closing and opening.
So that's in addition to the park, because this really, everything's one, on one side is very close. I'm just saying, if they send one person to do it, the job, it it probably, he or she can do it pretty conveniently uh at the same time.
Yeah, we.
They're not sending two people to do the same, do the same job, right?
We had hoped that we'd be able to roll it into that, which is why you didn't see this before. And as we're progressing, we're trying to make this happen. They're like, it's gonna cost more money. This is what you're seeing. Um, we we had hoped to roll it into that. We had tried.
Okay, so you you, so you're looking to that then? Because if they're sending two people, that doesn't make sense. It's the same location. Uh, at least, at least on one side. The other side is just like five minutes' drive. If they're sending two people, we're sent, we're paying two people to do this, two different jobs at the same location. I just feel that that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I know. So for Linda Vista Park, they're at their, they're at the park, they're locking the restrooms and then they have to walk, you know, three hundred yards or so to the gates and then walk back up. It's a short distance, takes a couple of minutes, not very long. From the McClone roadside, they have to park at the McClone Ranch when they're locking restrooms there. Then they have to cross the street. Again, maybe another fif- you know, ten minutes or so to do that. So you're probably looking at somewhere around fifteen minutes a day. That just adds up, you know, um.
Okay, just to make sure that's already incorporated in there. Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wei.
On the, on the city manager's discretion uh fund?
Oh, thank you. Yes. So the city manager's discretionary fund. Um, I hadn't actually viewed it as emergency. I viewed it as needed. And when we had the uh public request from students and a lot of council interest in it, rather than going through a process of deciding which budget's gonna handle City Hall, which budget is gonna handle other facilities, you know, and trying to divvy it up, I just said, it's clearly a council priority and a community priority. Let's just take it out of the manager's discretionary fund so we get it funded quickly and don't delay so we can get it implemented for the rest of this year. And then when we bring the budget to the council next spring, we'll have the annual costs allocated to where they should be to keep it an ongoing program. So it was mostly just trying to act quick and be responsive to the council and community. I authorized it to come out of the uh discretionary fund.
Yeah, I think that's great. But now the city manager only have twenty-five thousand dol- oh, twenty-five thousand dollars left and we're only in the first quarter. So I wonder if that doesn't leave a lot of money.
It doesn't leave a lot of money. And there was a suggestion from a staff person that I'll pass on to your new city manager to look at, maybe at the mid-year budget review, looking at whether there's a need to replenish the manager's discretionary fund to get through the end of the year. And if the council chooses to do that at the mid-year budget review, maybe you could do it at each quarterly budget review. But I knew it was a topic of focus for the council last spring. So I thought passing it off to the mid-year review made sense and let your new manager with his finance background weigh in with what he thinks is appropriate as a recommendation to council.
Uh, thank you. I just want to make sure that we uh replenish it because we're only at one quarter, a quarter off now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we've had an opportunity for everyone to ask questions at this time. And so let me go ahead, before we have any further deliberation on this, to ask for a motion. Can we have a motion on this item? Item number sixteen. Um, Council, Vice Mayor Chow, do you care to move? Item number fifteen, I should say. Um, and you'll need to unmute yourself, Vice Mayor.
Sorry. So I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash one zero eight, which approves the budget modification. Number twenty-one twenty-two dash one two seven, increasing appropriations and revenues by one million six oh one two four five dollars and uh two nine five two nine eight respectively.
Um, okay, I, you, where are you reading that second number? The?
Um, I think the what, first number is appropriations, the second number is revenues.
I think that's four nine five two eight nine, right?
Oh, sorry, four nine five two eight nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation on this item? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still raised. Did you want to make a comment at this time?
Yes, one comment. So it seems like we have about twenty million dollars from, because of reduction in expenses from uh imbalance last year. I wonder if we should consider invest that in potentially purchasing some sites for affordable housing because I understand if the city owns the site, it's a lot easier to find developers. And Cupertino unfortunately doesn't own a lot of sites. And and the community member recommended the city can even consider buying small sites and redevelop that into maybe four eight units of moderate income housing. Yeah, just a thought.
That's certainly something the city council could look at. I'd just be recommending it be looked at in context of all the capital needs of the city and we could try to structure that for the mid-year budget review.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see further comments here. Uh, so let's go ahead and um conduct a roll call vote on the item on the table. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that that vote, please?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Hi.
Councilmember Willie?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Hi.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with more voting now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, we will take a five-minute break. It's nine twenty-four now. So let's reconvene at nine thirty for item number sixteen, followed by item number eighteen. So we'll see you at nine thirty.